Good day, all. Commissioner President, please stand for the side of allegiance.
The allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do item number five. Discuss possible action to create temporary decision for the grants project director. And this was...
May I all make a motion to create the position?
Second.
Second.
The dollar amount? We need a dollar?
Or two, 200 a month?
Is it temporary?
Yes.
I've got a... Of course, I would like to have some clarification on what exactly this person will be doing 'cause there's been different opinions. One of them was that any grant had to go through them if Commissioner Holmes, for example, finds a grant he must apply for, that he cannot apply for it on its own, he has to go through this individual. And in my opinion, that was not the intent.
Yeah, no. I think that the creation of this position is because anybody who, a project director, helps the person who is applying for the grant, has to be a county employee. By state law, it has to be. So before this, we hired this person to help out, for example, the sheriff's department, which is now, Teresa's helping out, but when she leaves, this person will help that person more or less what the auditors office is doing right now.
Understandably, and the auditors office did not apply for the grants, so this is not gonna prohibit the sheriff, for example, from him and his staff applying for grants that come available. In his case, there's some that come up and they've got to act quickly because they have very short deadlines.
Right.
Just wanna make sure that that is clarified.
And what this is doing is actually preparing ourselves so when Teresa leaves, this person will oversee what Teresa used to do. It basically is basically doing the same thing that we're doing, except Teresa's gonna retire.
Oversight.
Unless she says she's not gonna retire, but at this point, she is. Okay?
My understanding, let me make sure that the application and everything still is done by the agency that wants to do that, but the actual submission of the grant has to be done through this individual.
Right.
Yes.
But it has to be, by law, it has to be a county employee, that's why we created it.
So the process of having to go through the grant review committee, et cetera, would not change?
No. Okay. Any other question, discussion? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. All right, next, item four, the budget workshop. The way we're gonna do it this year is we're gonna let the commissioner discuss it first, and then any department elected officer wants to discuss their budget is welcome to do so after the commissioners have discussed it. Frank, now you can come up here and...
The only thing that, this document that you received, the only changes that affected were the total revenue and interest in sinking funds, total revenue in the general fund, and then the first two pages that showed an allocation of the tax rate, and then the summary page which shows beginning cash balances and the estimated reserve that is gonna be in there. There's also one other change to the beginning cash in the general fund, getting a closer idea of what that number's gonna be. And so in the first filed budget, that was 1.8 million dollars, and in this one, you'll see it's 1.4.
Okay.
That's the only change in this document from the judge's filed budget.
Right.
So we're gonna do a tax increase of two cents, which I don't agree with. You reduce the interest and sinking fund tax rate from .0658 to .0411?
Mm-hmm. And in so doing, what it, the effect of that was to reduce the estimated ending cash reserve in sinking funds to right out of a million dollars at the end of the next fiscal year. You need to realize by doing that, there will have to be an adjustment for that.
The following fiscal year, we're gonna be staring down the back of raising interest sinking funds to balance it.
Yes.
By how much?
You can, you, well, what you need in there is 10.4 cents to pay the anticipated debt. So this is 4.11 cents. You're gonna have a million dollars cash reserve in sinking funds. But there should be a reallocation of the rates, not necessarily all of going from 4.11 to 10.4. You wouldn't have a six cent tax increase, you would make adjustments in your general fund.
Or you have to reduce your general fund rate to balance it.
That's correct.
And then that's gonna reduce the revenue in the general fund.
That's, that's correct.
Since your beginning cash balance is projected to be 891,000 versus the 1.4 we have now.
That's correct.
So you're gonna spend 400, let's see, 600,000 dollars of our beginning cash balance to balance this budget.
Okay, but you have to take into consideration the 2.5 million dollar tax note that you've authorized. So I anticipate that the court will probably move capital outlay out of this budget, so that's 1.1 million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The possibility of discussion of the Frontera project, whatever contribution of that is, that comes out, and all those items, and the Westgate project, so those items would come out of that. So potentially, that 1.8 million dollars would be closer to 2 million dollars in cash reserve in the general fund. And those are the items that the court needs to decide to give us direction on how to fine-tune the budget. Hopefully, we get some direction today to through this discussion.
Well, it's my understanding the point of the tax note was to move the capital out of this and pay for it.
Right, but then, there's been no court action on that, and so...
1.7 million.
1.1.
1.1.
I mean, 1.1.
Yeah, 1 million and 170 some odd dollars.
But are we gonna move all of that out of there, or just a portion of it?
That's, that's the, there probably needs to be some discussion on, on the capital outlay to equalize that between the precincts, but that's for the court to decide.
Frank, on this capital outlay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Judge.
Uh, the IT, phase one, is that in there?
That's not in there. My assumption was that that would be part of that 2.5 million dollars.
Right, that was my assumption too, that there's money. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, well, one, I don't agree on the interest and sinking. I mean, we'll need to sit down and figure that out, 'cause I'm still off when I take...
Oh, on the beginning cash balance?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did not adjust the beginning cash balance on that.
Okay, so we should be a little bit higher on that?
I anticipate that that number will be slightly higher.
'Cause I'm thinking anywhere from 600, 600, 700,000 more. And I mean, we'll go ahead.
And those numbers can be fine-tuned as we go through this process.
Yeah, and if you, 'cause if, when you look at that, I mean, I went through and, again, started with our, what we had in our interest and sinking, and then deducted all our payments, and I came up with a three point some odd million dollar moving instead of the, moving it forward versus the 2.3. So if we're closer to that, then our ending cash balance not gonna be a million, it's gonna be about a million five.
Yeah, so there's...
There's about 500,000 dollars.
There's some fine tuning that hasn't been done on all the beginning cash balances, actually.
And then, in here, I, we just got this one, but I know in the last one that was filed, there was not a, nothing in here for the money we're gonna receive from tax, from TAC, a line item on that 167 or whatever.
Actually, the, the, the beginning cash number takes that into consideration.
Into consideration. Were we gonna wanna put that in a line item all by itself in case we, so the 1.4 already has the 167,000 in it?
Taking where we stand today and what we anticipate coming in and going out by September 30th, that's the number. And actually, it's 1.4 plus the 200,000 dollars that's allocated for the accounting software, because that's not, that's included in our cash number.
Does that 1.4 include the 910,000?
No.
No, the 910,000 presently sits in the general fund. That has not been moved out to the grant account, which is where the Westgate construction is being handled. But that was, the 910 have been drawn, right now, today, there's 4.3, 4.3 million dollars in the general fund. But there's 1.8 million dollars included in that number. There's 1.8 million dollars of Marshall money that has been received and has been not sent out, and there's 910,000 dollars from the tax note that's included in that number that needs to be...
So that's not in this budget, the 910?
That's not in there, no.
The 910's not in here?
No.
The revenue or the expenditure?
Nope.
So we need to put that in there?
Right, well, there is not a specific line item in this budget for the Westgate project. There's also nothing in this budget concerning the animal control center. So there's things that are not in, and there are things that should be taken out, depending on what the court wants to do and utilizing this tax...
Well, let's fix one thing. Do we need to, we need to, the half a million or whatever we're gonna raise in taxes, with the, the proposed tax rate is, that money was going to be set up for the Westgate.
And that, that specific line item is not in there because that takes court action.
So do we need to act on every item and just go and take a vote? That way, we set this up, that way, you know which way we're running?
Yeah, that would, that would be preferable to...
So then what are we gonna do with the 910,000 that we just borrowed for the Westgate? If you're gonna take the tax increase and use it to pay for the Westgate, what are we gonna do with the 910,000?
You're gonna need a lot more money than the 500 right now just to get started.
That's, you're gonna have, we're into a situation now where we're gonna be three or four months before any funding from the state comes in. So I anticipate you're gonna have to utilize the 910 plus monies to fund the project, then get reimbursed, but you're gonna go three or four months before any funding from the state comes in.
I understand that part, but we're talking about a tax increase to fund the shortfall in the project, and we just issued 910,000 dollars to, to pay for the project in a tax note. At the end of this project, that 910,000 dollars is gonna be there.
We don't know how much.
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't know how much, but I mean...
If, if, if the Westgate project, if the county's contribution is in excess of 425,000 dollars, the tax note is gonna have to be utilized to pay that. What the two cents basically put in using the 92% collection rate is about 425,000.
So you need a line item for the 910, you need a line item for the 400 and some odd thousand dollars?
No, I don't need a line item for the 910. The 910, that will happen in this current fiscal year. So that 910,000, what was discussed at the last commissioners' court meeting, is we would move 410,000 dollars out immediately into that grant account. That other 500,000 dollars will remain in the general fund, and as needed, that money will be transferred.
So you need a line item then for the money that the tax is gonna generate in order to spend it?
Yes.
You just, well, I mean, you're putting your tax increase in the general fund, 'cause that's where the tax increase is. You didn't need a line item for the expenditure of the Westgate, you don't need a revenue part, you've already got the revenue part.
Already got the revenue.
So you need a line item.
I need the expense.
The 910,000 can only be used for debt and capital projects. It cannot be used for operating.
The...
Because it's the issuance of debt out of an interest and sinking fund.
No, no, that, that's correct. The 910,000 dollars, the court action to draw down the 910,000 dollars was to fund...
The Westgate.
The Westgate project.
Yes.
So that's the purpose of drawing that money down. That, that money is already in the bank waiting for expenses to be incurred.
Yes.
So again, we need a, we need a vote on setting up a line item to, to spend the other 400 some odd thousand dollars?
The 425,000 dollars will be for any change orders that may come that are not funded by the grant for the project.
Then just create a capital outlay line item, and we can fund it out of capital outlay?
That's the...
Because that's what the, the, the intent of the money is capital outlay projects cannot be used for anything else but capital outlay.
Is that a motion? Let's, let's take yours on.
I'll make that a, I'll make it into a motion to create the...
425?
The 425 into the grants for the Loughlin project, and the remainder to be put under capital outlay.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Any more questions and discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero.
And then you're gonna put the revenue in here? 'Cause the revenue's not in here.
Revenue is in there with the tax increase.
No, 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 the 910.
The 910, there's a revenue item for the 910,000 dollars in the general fund.
The one that we're gonna issue for next year?
Next year.
I'm talking about the one that we issued this year.
The one that we've already issued this year will be, will be moved, so I'm not including that 910,000 in the beginning cash number. So you're gonna have that 910,000 in a beginning cash number, but it's been designated for a specific...
I understand, but just like we did the other capital outlay projects here, we have, we have the revenue, the beginning cash balance, which is the 400, in this case, 910,000, and then the expenditure of what that, that is.
Mm-hmm. But the, the, the 910,000 dollars that's, that's been drawn down is to fund the Westgate construction until we get reimbursed.
Yes.
And then we will get reimbursed from that.
Yes.
There are, it's an unknown value on what contribution, what additional contribution Dryberry County's gonna have to have.
Yes.
So how do we keep track of it? I guess would, I sort of agree with him, 'cause the last time we did this, and we rolled over the 910, we had specific use for that money.
Right.
And it showed up. It showed up as, as our beginning cash balance.
Mm-hmm.
And then our expenses, we had an expense for all that. And the expense would be Westgate. So would it be a problem in doing it, like what he wants to do? Because that way, we could actually, we have the 9.10 added to the 1.8. There's a reason you're not wanting to do it.
My problem is, is the court can't expend funds that aren't in the budget. If there's no revenue for those funds, and that 910 that we're gonna create the line item for has to come out of what's existing here. Yes, it sits over there somewhere, but it ain't here.
Okay. The, um, what's, what's in this budget, which, that you're, that you're looking at, is next fiscal year drawdown of the 910. There, I mean, we, we all anticipate that we, our contribution to the Westgate is not gonna be 910,000 dollars.
Nope.
So the only thing that affects in the budget that you're reviewing right now is how much of that 910,000 dollars would go to your beginning cash number. It's not a revenue item, because it's already in cash.
No, it's a beginning, it's a beginning cash balance of some sort, just like we have over here on your beginning cash balance for the 2013 tax note. You have 123,000, your beginning cash balance, and then you break it down by projects...
Sure.
Of what those are.
Mm-hmm.
Same principle. I'm not saying put it in the general fund, because you can't put it in the general fund 'cause it has to be used for capital, but at the end of that project, we're gonna have a chunk of money left, hopefully.
Hopefully.
That money can still only be used for capital outlet.
For capital projects.
Capital projects. So if you put it in the beginning cash balance, and it winds up in the general fund, and we end up using it for operating, we got a problem.
Mm-hmm. It, that's why it's not in the beginning cash.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, it's just like you did the, the, the 2013 tax note, you create another one over here that says Loughlin project or whatever, that shows the beginning cash balance of 910,000, then you show that we move 400 and something to the grants fund, and wherever we put it, however it's done. And at the end of that project, there's a reimbursement from the state, so that 910's still there. So if the court decides at some point to go do another capital project, that money's sitting there, and it's not tied up in the general fund where it's not supposed to be. That, that's all I'm saying is, don't put it there, create, like we did on this other one, another complete deal.
I, I understand. So on our summary page, then, if we, like we did last year, if we put the 910,000 dollars and we put it for capital projects to be expended as 910,000 dollars, that way, you would take that 910,000 dollars cash, beginning cash number, plus the 200,000 dollars for the software that's remaining, plus the balance that you have in your general fund should equal the total amount of cash you're making.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
And I understand we're not gonna know what the total number is until the end of this project. And we may wind up with 910,000, we may wind up with nothing. Nobody knows that answer yet.
Yeah, we, we don't know, but I, I understand that if you put it in a budget and include it in, all encompassing for your beginning cash balance, at least it's budgeted as a capital project.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I understand.
I mean, that's what we've done at the, that's the way we've done it the last time.
That's exactly what we did.
Sure. Okay. I've got a deal on the animal control. Okay. Yeah. We've come up with a salary of 28,000. So the salary would be 28,000, retirement at 11.76 would be 3,293, somewhere around there. And then you have social security at 2,142, but basically, the salary's 28,000 plus fringe benefit. And then the line items for the, for the animal control facility would be food is about 9,400 dollars, the medicine for the animals is 3,400. I put in 2,000 dollars for vet, travel and training, 6,800 dollars, fuel, and I'll give you this, Frank.
Okay.
5,100 dollars. And then tools that we're gonna need to go round are about 4,800 dollars. And you're looking at about, somewhere with fringe benefits and anything, somewhere about 66,000 dollars to fund this.
60 what?
About 66,000. And I'll give you this piece type of record.
And we believe that we can operate this with one guy.
For right now, yes. It's gonna be more than what we have.
We're gonna put it under the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Can you operate it with one guy?
Basically, we can do, we can do what we can with that one individual, yes, in the meantime. Probably to have it properly staffed, probably be about three people total.
And this will be...
So these items, if, if the court puts it in, will be an item underneath the sheriff's office?
There, there's some money there right now, because you already created some of these line items within the budget from the last go, within the last thirty months, four months. You created a, under animal control, there was for the facility, 50,000.
Oh, right, yeah.
There's 85,000 dollars set aside for that. So the 50,000 dollars we've only used, I think, like 10,000, or, well, I think there's POs for 22,000 dollars right now in order for the facility. So there's still money left in there. That money, can we roll that over because the facility's not built?
Well, that money's not left in there, it's sitting in the beginning cash balance of your general fund.
Right.
So we're gonna need...
We've already utilized those funds to balance the general fund, now we've got to readjust that to pay for the...
Yes, you would have to put whatever has not been expended in this current fiscal year and put it into the next...
And if we do the dollars that I just said right now, the only thing that we need to, the other line item that needs to be added is to build the facility itself, whatever was left out of that 50,000 dollars right now.
And we took that money out of...
Contingency.
Contingency. So right now, in this proposed budget, that money is sitting in your beginning cash balance of your general fund.
That's correct.
So you're gonna have to...
So there has to be another line item added to the ones that you said for...
On the building, for the building. And I don't know what that dollar amount is, I think it's, it's somewhere around, I think there's like 30, I'm gonna say like 32,000 dollars still left out of that 50,000 that we had set aside out of contingency.
But some of that is gonna be expended before September 30th?
Yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll just kinda have to estimate what that number's gonna be.
But you'll need a line item for that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna create this, and that is what it is, but I hate to see us understaff it and underfund it.
Well, I mean, it's real simple, we can add two more people. He said that it's just a few people to do.
Well, I don't think you need two, but I, you know, if you're gonna do shifts, you're gonna have night, and you're gonna have day.
We, I don't think that was the plan. That was not the plan.
Well, I mean, but if you're gonna, that, that's ultimately where it's gonna wind up.
The plan was not to have, not, I mean, if somebody gets bit and visiting with everybody, I mean, if somebody gets bit and you need to be called out, then you get called out. But to have somebody there all the time, it was never intended to have somebody on sta, on, on, at the facility 24 hours a day, that was never the intent.
And this individual will operate strictly in the county?
You're, you're gonna wind up with a lot of comp time.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna wind up with a lot of comp time out of this deal.
Well, the thing is that the city has their own.
I'm not talking about being in the city.
Well, my, my question is, is this individual gonna operate strictly in the county?
Yes.
Outside city limits?
Yes.
Outside city limits.
Y'all wanna add another member to the staff? I mean, the intent was never for the individual to, for somebody to be there 24 hours a day. I think when we first started this was, visiting with the sheriff, it would be regular working hours. And then if somebody got bit and we needed to go out, I think we've had two or three instances, two instances in the last couple of years only, that, that somebody's gotten bit and we need to send somebody out after hours. At that point, then somebody would need to go out, but...
I called the city on a Saturday because I had a sick animal in my yard, and they don't pick up on Saturdays.
No, it's, it's...
And I believe, we don't, we know we need the service, but I don't think there is enough of a need out there to have more than one individual. I, I believe we need to start with one and then, and see what, see how that works, and then, and then take it from there. I don't think, to overstaff it would be worse than to understaff it right now.
And then the whole thing is, we're getting something started that we've never done.
Exactly.
I think that applies after moving in the right direction.
I have had one complaint in my precinct this year for, for stray dogs, so I don't know how many complaints the other precincts have had, but...
I've had quite a few in precinct four, but I, I think we ought to start with one person and see how that works out. And if down the road, we need extra help, well, we can always add another person, amend the budget, or...
That work?
Or do whatever way you do.
So I mean, your consensus is one?
That, that was my intention when we created that decision, that we create one, and then if it doesn't work, add more.
But I would like that one person to start full-time in precinct four.
That, yeah, and that, that one dog that I had a complaint on, one of our employees fell on top of him, and we never saw him again.
The, can I keep going?
Sure.
The utilities, we've got three buildings we're fixing to...
Is there a motion to put that in?
You want to make a motion for one position?
I'll make a motion, all the numbers that I gave to put those in.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second. Any more discussion? And all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero.
The, we've got three buildings that we're fixing to, on the utility side that are fixing to come on, we have the women's shelter, veteran's office, and the animal control. The utility side of all those three buildings, we're gonna need another 12,500 just to pay utilities on the three buildings.
12,500?
12,500, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. There's a motion, I need a second for that?
Second.
Second?
And, and just a little bit to that, caveat to that, is really the only one that is gonna be, I mean, Sosa, we're moving him, we rented another facility, Commissioner Flotus, and this board is actually going out and looking for another, another building. The women's shelter, once that's moved, the building where they're at is going to be utilized for another department. So I mean, there's, there's three buildings.
The building who's there?
Sir?
The building who's there?
The building where the women's shelter's gonna move to, we talked about, that facility's actually still gonna be used.
By?
By who?
Well, the plan was for adult probation, is what we talked about the last go-round. We all sat, same meeting, here.
Left, so soon.
Did what?
Left, so soon.
Well, we, we talked about that, we, well, we won't get into that, but either way, there is three other buildings. There's a motion and a second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion on that? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero.
I've got one more. I've got one more, then I'll quit and let everybody else go. The hot tax, on page one-ten, that one there, the amount that we're projecting is twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-five, but we need to go by the percentages, not, not by what, 'cause when you look at it, it's the same dollar amount as what we got last year, but yet our collections we're projecting is going to be less.
Oh, yeah.
So, and then on special events, there was nothing, and I mean, all the percentages were actually decided by a court order, so it needs to go back to percentages. I mean, I've got other stuff, but I'll quit right there.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Frank, can you stay on that same topic, I'm sorry?
I'm done, done, sure.
On that hot tax, Huma called and they said, they were, about, they wanted to get the same amount, but I also told them that they're based on the collection and five percent. Well, when I looked at this paper, that, that very administration's twenty-five percent, is that because of law, we have to keep that amount of money?
That's a court order.
No, that's...
But what I'm saying is, why do we do that money?
The court in the past has utilized it for unanticipated events that have, have come.
An example, I mean, I'm just asking, 'cause I didn't know what...
One of the deals. The special events, I'm sorry, the administration, the twenty-five percent, that's just money just going into the general fund.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Are you done with that?
Yes.
I still have a concern with salaries for the, some elected officials are, we've always talked about getting more money for our lower-end employees, but yet we winded up giving everybody the same amount of increase, or, well, when you started going percentages, our upper end is the one that benefits the most. We've got a, one elected official's going up to seventy-six, four eighty-one, we've got one going up to eighty-seven thousand one one six, we've got one going up to a hundred and two thousand, we've got four going up to sixty-four, four seventy-four, we've got two going to seventy-six, four eighty-one, but yet those that are at the lower end, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five, to thirty thousand, these individuals here are going up well over two thousand dollars a year, yet the lower end are going up in the range of seven hundred, well, seventeen hundred, the percentage wise is gonna be two, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars max. I, again, would like to see the lower-end employees get the bigger chunk of the, of the raises, and also, I would like this court to consider setting salaries, structured salaries for incoming elected officials, you have an elected official earning seventy thousand dollars, you have been there ten, twelve years, you have one brand-new comes in, comes in at the same salary, seventy thousand dollars. I believe that we need to also structure the elected official salaries to, for the new incoming elected officials, even if, while they are learning the position, maybe the first couple of years, do not come in at a set salary, but at a lower salary until they learn the positions. And again, this is my own personal opinion, and I believe that the intent is good for everyone to get a good raise, then again, the ones at the upper end always get a lot more than the ones at the lower end, and I'd like to see that reversed. And I agree with you, Commissioner, except that when I came in here, there is not really a structure for a base pay for elected office. No, there's not. There is not, so you can't really say, okay, this is where we're gonna start at, or whatever, it just, whatever the person, when they left, the other person takes over at that salary, that's my understanding. Right, yes, sir, that is correct, right now, the only way we could do it would be, let's say, give everyone the seventeen hundred, and then everybody over a certain amount, not get the one percent, or vice versa, give those over fifty, sixty thousand the one percent, but not the seventeen hundred. And again, this is, this is just... But it still doesn't answer the question, is where do you start the base pay for elected office? No, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to set that down. That's the key, it's not the raises, it's the pay. Correct. So, any other discussion on that? Let's go back to, are you finished, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wanna discuss on the...
I mean, I'm gonna save my biggest discussion on the tax increase for Friday.
Okay.
I've got something, Judge.
We have a public hearing on Friday, Monday, I don't think we have.
Just saying from town, that we need to make sure that we put a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in there to be able to total up the total match that we need to, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I received an email from Richard Seiges with Dennebaum, and he's asking for us to allocate an additional eighteen thousand dollars, and this is for drainage easements, they were not calculated in the, in the project at Border Patrol, they won this extra drainage easement, and they're wanting eighteen thousand dollars of additional funding for this project concerning those easements.
Where's that at?
It'd be the ninety-eight on the last report, page ninety-eight, on the one during this candid.
There we go. We currently have one seventy-five, you're saying we need to put the three fifty plus eighteen?
Yeah, it would be a one ninety-three, extra one seventy-five, those one seventy-five are there, they've been there.
So what's the total dollar amount?
One ninety-three. Three fifty for the match.
No, three fifty plus eighteen?
Yeah, plus eighteen, well, three sixty-eight.
Three sixty-eight. But we were gonna take that out of there and put that under the tax note.
That's what I'd suggest to do.
Yeah. Take it out of here and then put a line as part of the tax note, the three sixty-eight to fund that.
Hundred and ninety-three, is that what you were saying?
Two, three?
One ninety-three.
Three hundred and sixty-eight.
So theoretically, what we're, what we're just talking about is removing the one seventy-five from the current operating budget, and add three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars as an expense to be done with the tax note.
Right. So you're gonna take it all out, not the difference?
That's...
Fund it all to the tax note.
Fund it all through the tax note.
And then, I'll go here.
So three sixty-eight, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, two, one, five, again.
On the capital outlay, I don't have a problem moving stuff out of here into the tax note, but I think we need to set a limit, these lower-end ones, I don't think we need to fund the tax note, I think we need to fund the other...
I think the last meeting, we were at fifteen thousand?
It was discussed that anything in excess of fifty thousand dollars be acquired with a tax note, and keep everything less than fifty thousand dollars in the operating budget.
The, let me get back to the pipeline, that money that we're generating off the pipeline is in our general fund, we had, there's a court order, and we had, we told the state we were going to move that money into a separate fund for the four precincts.
Oh, you're calling that the, yes, taxing district.
Are we gonna do that, I mean?
We have to.
Huh?
We have to.
Yeah.
It has to be put under road and bridge.
Okay, so what...
The value that she did give me was a fifty-eight million dollar value.
For one?
On that pipeline.
For one pipeline? There's two.
Well, the thing is, though, that we only have value on one. And I don't know how that works, if they get a discount or whatever, but that's what she said the value was, the fifty-eight million.
As far as the collection process, when you do that, don't you have to have special rules in place for the tax assessor collector, so she allocates a certain portion of the collections to that specific project?
That was part of the original order.
Yeah, and that's what Allison Bass, or Allison, Allison Bass, right?
Yeah, it's part of the original order was to, to take that revenue, a percentage of that revenue and set it aside, 'cause they can only be used for road and bridge, that's all it can be used for.
Okay. I'm, I'm talking more mechanical.
Oh, good.
I think there has to be something in place in the tax office.
Oh, yes.
When she, somebody comes in there and says, here's my tax money, doesn't she have to say, okay, well, that's part of...
Yes.
This?
There's only, the good thing about this is there's only one company.
There'd be a question to make sure that she understands...
Yes.
What property that is?
And there's only one company that owns, I think it's Plains something.
All American Plains, Plains All American.
Yeah, it's the one that came, not Comstock's side, but the other side.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's only, there's only one, according to the guy that does the appraisals for the...
So it's only based on the valuation of that pipeline?
Of the pipeline.
So when they come in and write their check, whatever percentage that we allocated has to go over here, the rest of it goes in the general fund.
All right, and the tax assessor collector is on board with that, I mean, she knows what she's supposed to do.
Well, we have to get the judge probably to visit with her, because there was a court order that there was a certain percentage...
No, I, I understand, I just...
No, no, somebody has to go visit with her, that's what you're getting at, and I think he needs to go visit with her.
Okay, so therefore, the fifty-eight million dollars, we're gonna utilize the ninety-two percent historical collection, make to estimate revenue?
Yes, but there was a percentage in the court order that we were going to use, a certain percentage of that would be used for the road and bridge, we didn't take it on.
No, it was like fifty percent or forty percent, or I don't remember, I don't have my head, only a percentage.
Do you guys know what the name of the company is?
I think it's All American Plains Pipeline or something.
And Sheedy already knows which one, 'cause I visited with her two weeks ago. The mechanism needs to be put in place, and somebody needs to visit with, be in order to get that mechanism set.
And I need to know what percentage is going into the road and bridge, and what specific use that is going to be used for, and what percentage is gonna go in general fund, and what specific use that's gonna be used.
What, what the statute says is the money can be used for maintenance and upkeep, so that's the use, you can use it for anything in road and bridge, for maintenance and upkeep.
Hundred percent of the fifty-eight million?
Yes.
So...
Well, not a hundred percent of it, whatever percentage we set aside, and I think it was only fifty percent.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't set, we didn't set the total amount of tax we were gonna collect on the value of fifty-eight million, or whatever that value is, for road and bridge, we took a percentage of it, and the rest of it was going back into wherever, the general fund, part of the road and bridge, interesting, whatever.
Okay, so then you want me to take fifty percent of a fifty-eight million dollar valuation and put that revenue into road and bridge?
I guess what we need to do, what we need to do is make sure...
Yes, that's what we have to do.
We need to make sure what the court order said.
What the percentage was.
Cause it might not be fifty, fifty-four.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, we need to make sure what the percentage is.
Okay, are we gonna find that out today so we can put that change in, or we're gonna discuss that later?
I don't remember where the court order was.
How long ago was it, Commissioner?
It was Allison Bass, it would've been two years, Laura was here.
Two years ago?
Laura was here, yeah, it'd have been two, two and a half years.
Can you, Jamie, can you look back in the original minutes and see if you can...
You know what would help, is maybe we can call right now your office to check and see if when we actually got the money given to the, to the different commissioners, because that would give us within two, within two months before that, when it was done. We received, we received the funds, and your office is the one that said, okay, this department, you have forty-two or forty-six thousand dollars, and when we received those funds, we did, we had to have done a court order about two months before that.
We didn't get the funds yet, you don't get the funds until you do the project.
No, no, the, from the state.
Yeah, the forty-four thousand...
Yeah, we got them.
We don't have those funds yet.
We've used, it was like a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, if you ain't using, I think I've got like two thousand in my forty-some odd thousand dollars.
No, I mean, I understand, but as my understanding, we had to apply, do the job, get the receipt, get reimbursement, and then get reimbursed back before you actually...
Yeah, but...
They haven't given us the whole thing yet.
Yeah, but we'll know when they said, okay, now you can start discussing, Carl is the one that took care of that, and got with your office, because I mean, as soon as, I mean, it was like two months after we took the court action that we started using, I started using the money within two months.
That was handled through a grant side, yeah.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But to get closer to a date of when, that way we just ain't looking back twenty thirteen, twenty, you know, doing whole years.
You can search by title on the minutes, right?
Control F four. Control F four is online.
So, no action on that yet, 'cause I don't know the number yet.
Yeah.
I guess what we can do is figure out that money, how are we gonna split that money, whatever that money is.
We would split it the same way we split our current percentages.
Okay, so that's going to move monies that we have currently in the general fund...
Over to the road and bridge.
Over to the road and bridge fund, and then we're gonna add expense items...
In the general fund.
For, in the road and bridge fund.
Well, no, it'll be under your normal, yeah, yeah, you'll just increase your normal paving operations, and it'll be based off the percentage that we currently use to allocate those deals.
Is it based on the, the rate on the general fund?
Yeah, all of them put together.
All the tax rate, interest and sinking fund, so it's based on fifty-one point nine-eight?
Yes, if that's the tax rate that gets approved, yes, it would be based off of that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be...
Then, then you're actually taking money out of interest sinking fund and the road and bridge, or, or the, yeah.
You're reducing interest and sinking fund, road, and general fund.
Or was it, we need to get the original order right on.
It was something like almost three hundred thousand dollars.
Between all, between everything, yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to, these numbers and those two funds are gonna have to be allocated, you wouldn't actually take it out of the farm-to-market, because that's already in the road and bridge.
Yeah, but I...
Basically the same thing.
Yeah, but you gotta take it all out and then allocate it.
Yeah, it's gonna be two, yeah, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars approximately, that's gonna be reduced from your current tax collections, added to road and bridge, and distributed to, between the precincts. So y'all are gonna get with me and let me know the percentages and how much the allocation is.
I'll explain it, I did the percentages right now, if you want.
But I don't know...
The dollars, the two dollars, yeah.
The dollars.
Yeah, I don't know what the...
Judge?
Yeah, I'll check with the, and check with, and see we can find the court order.
Okay.
Okay. Now I'll get back to you, Frank.
So, y'all were talking on the, on the capital leases, is it, are we sticking anything at fifty and below, or how are we gonna do that?
I think that's what we voted on, I think fifty below.
I don't think there was a vote.
No.
There wasn't a vote, there was a discussion, we couldn't vote because we hadn't, the budget hadn't been filed yet, so, I don't know what you...
So is that...
That's what I would suggest, that, that the, anything in excess of the fifty thousand dollars, and I don't know if you wanna to go over the capital outlay that's currently in there and adjust anything in that, but that, that would...
No, I thought we were doing the three forty apiece, I didn't submit another.
Well, I mean, that's, if you're, if you're gonna do the three forty, I would suggest doing that with that tax note, I mean, that was...
The original three forty that we were gonna do when we first started the discussion of the tax note was before these numbers wound up in here. The original three forty that we were going to do when we first started the discussion of the tax note was before these numbers wound up in here. This was the capital everybody requested. We originally had three hundred and forty per precinct, and then as part of this budget cycle, these were numbers of stuff we had asked for, or everybody had asked for. And I, I guess everything wound up in here?
Everything's in.
Everything's in here.
So are we going to go by these numbers, or are we going to do the three forty?
My understanding, we did the three forty and then these were additional numbers on top of that.
Okay, well, there's not enough money in the tax note to do.
But we were going to re, reallocate some of these other numbers that were in here. I had asked for three hundred and ten for roller and paving, doesn't mean, we needed the, the roller was fifty. The paving, I just want, we currently have, I think, eighty-nine.
Eighty-three thousand.
Eighty-three thousand, if we can increase it to a hundred, I'm perfectly fine with that, in the, the actual budget, it doesn't have to be in capital.
Won't you essentially do that when you reallocate this two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars?
Basically, that's what you're going to do.
No, because I mean, if you, all our paving budgets are going to go up.
Yeah, it's basically what you're doing.
So wouldn't you take it out then of your capital outlay that you requested here?
Yeah, I mean, I, I never intended it to wind up in capital, the paving part, I intended it to wind, wind up over here, not there. The only thing I had requested in capital was a roller of fifty thousand dollars.
So if we just three forty apiece and then whatever the paving ends up being extra because of the valuation and the pipeline, makes up percentages.
Well, I mean, that, yeah, that part of it is going to take care of itself.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, but he's saying he needed more money in paving.
Yeah, I was just trying to get the more money in paving, whatever that number comes to with this increase, I'm perfectly fine with.
Okay, so, so then, then instead of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, that needs to be reduced to fifty thousand dollars?
If we decide we just do three forty, we do three forty, I needed a roller, but three forty was for a motorbieter.
Well, if we, I mean, we need to come up with a number.
And what about, um, increasing four?
I think I'm perfectly fine if we do fifty across the board on top of the three forty.
What's the question on precinct four?
You have two hundred and forty-five thousand, but we're giving you three hundred and forty in the tax note.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that's where we're going to work it, I mean, our, whatever we requested, road and bridge, I mean, that was going to be part of the tax note.
Okay, so I'm adding one million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of the two point five will be for the three hundred and forty thousand dollar per precinct.
That's what that number is.
Oh, is that again Frank?
One million, three hundred and sixty thousand.
Is parks and fairgrounds going to get anything?
Out of the tax note? Well, I mean, that's now, now at the time.
What was your number? What was your number?
One million, three hundred and sixty.
One million, three hundred and sixty thousand.
I thought the tax note money was for precinct.
Well, but we need to fund the other capital.
That's three hundred and forty thousand per precinct.
That gives you one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, and you, what was the issuance to?
Two point five. So, um.
And what's the remaining capital in here if you take those numbers, if you take the capital that?
About eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred.
So, uh.
Well, it would be less than that.
You got, you got to consider the, the first phase of the IT, which was?
Two hundred and thirty-six thousand, because there's two hundred and seven in there, and there was four hundred and some odd thousand put together, I think it was like two hundred and thirty-six thousand. Because there was two hundred and seven thousand already left and there was four hundred and some odd thousand in the first phase.
Yeah, I thought it was a bigger number than that.
How much was it, man? I brought the sheet, but I can't find it, I started to spread everything out.
The first phase?
The first phase was four hundred and some odd thousand.
It was, uh, four hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, and there was two hundred and seven, so that's how, come I said I thought it was two hundred and some odd thousand that needed to be put in the tax note. You have two hundred and seven thousand dollars already in this budget for IT.
In capital outlay?
No, no, it's, it's part of your.
In beginning cash balance.
Beginning cash.
On that accounting software.
That's not all, that's not for all IT, that's two hundred thousand dollars.
Is what?
There, there's going to, there's going to need to be some reprogramming of the software.
So what would, what would, we asked this question the last go around, there was two hundred and seven thousand, I thought come I came up with that.
Yeah, two hundred and seven.
If there's money that still needs to come out at two hundred and seven, then what money still needs to come out at two hundred and seven?
I don't have that number right now today because there are some issues with the changes that took place this week concerning the personnel policy manual. And I'm not sure what that cost is going to be.
If we leave a hundred and seven thousand in there, would that be sufficient?
If, I think if, if you left fifty thousand dollars in there for the remaining software deal and use the hundred and fifty-seven thousand for the phase.
That would be good.
You'd probably be alright.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, he, about four hundred and forty thousand, leave, take, if we leave a hundred and fifty-seven thousand to go towards that, you're two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars short.
So two hundred and eighty-three in the tax note?
Plus the one fifty-seven from over there.
Over here.
Yes, sir.
And then you need to add your three hundred and sixty-eight for frontera, right?
I got, I got that one in there. So IT, give me the number again, Commissioner, I'm sorry, on the tax note.
Two hundred and eighty-three?
Two eighty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, you're at one point nine five one in tax note.
I get two point, two million eleven.
Three sixty-eight.
You got one million, three hundred and sixty, you got two hundred and eighty-six, you got three hundred and sixty-eight.
You, you're right.
Gives you two million, eleven thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm going to say again, I need some money for parks and fairgrounds and stuff like that.
For what? What are we going to do?
I'd like to build a football fields and baseball fields, and if that doesn't work, then I'd like to go ahead and do, buy equipment, whichever way y'all want to run, it's all up to y'all.
I think we need to look at the issuance of a bond election and a sports complex before we start doing that. And I understand you need capital equipment, and I'm perfectly fine with capital equipment.
Well, I would ask that y'all give me the same three forty that y'all, that every other precinct had, I'll put that in form of motion, if it doesn't work, then I'll go back and ask for capital, for, for equipment.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second that for a discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
How far will that take us towards building the fields?
I can do a football field, three baseball fields, and maybe a little, uh, covered area for them to play soft, uh, soccer, not soccer, volleyball and basketball. And then give me a little bit of money to buy a, about a forty, fifty thousand dollar bit of equipment.
We need to look at letting the voters approve a sports complex and build it right.
Why, why do we need to do that?
Same reason we did with the library.
Oh, and.
The voters deserve the right to have what they need, or to make the decision on what they need. Instead of continuing to build pieces here and pieces there and pieces here, we need to look at building a real sports complex, and I think that's something the voters need to make that decision on.
Are we, do we have a figure for that already?
No, we don't. I, at the meeting a couple of months ago, when I wanted to go out and hire an engineer to start getting the numbers together, and we did, we didn't approve it, so. I know there's going to be an offer of land donated to the county to build one, um, that'll be coming here in the next few months, um, but I think that's the direction we need to go. I don't think building those fields at that fairgrounds is, is the right direction.
You know, and, and I think that, you know, if we build a sports complex, don't build it, I think we all agree, we probably need more than what we have. I don't feel like if we built it, they wouldn't be utilized, I, I think the minute we got done, people would use it. Even if we built a sports com- complex, people would still use it. And again, it's a motion, we have a second, and if y'all don't want it, that's fine, then I'll come back and make another motion for some equipment. But I do believe that, uh, no matter what we build, uh, it's still never going to be enough. I, I think this we could use right away.
And even if we use, we do do a sports complex, these can be used as practice fields, we're, we hurt big time for practice fields.
But wasn't the city doing a master plan for parks?
They have a master plan, uh, right now, the, the, what they were doing on the Field of Dreams, they had, uh, two baseball fields, a soccer field, uh, I think a basketball court, I think the first phase was only going to do a baseball field and a soccer field.
The city just backed out of the Field of Dreams.
Uh, my understanding is the next meeting that they put it back on the agenda.
They're going to look at a sports complex, a larger facility.
My, my understanding as of last week, they were putting it back on the agenda, uh, to talk about it again, because the council wanted to talk about the Field of Dreams again. So, again, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't see how that wouldn't be used, I mean, I think it'd be a benefit to the community, uh, that we could actually build now versus, you know, at the end of the day, do we need more yet? But I think this would serve a need now, and, and it wouldn't be that expensive. As compared to the millions of dollars that are being thrown out, sorry.
If, if the city is looking at a sports complex, or still looking at the Field of Dreams, why do we need a sports complex?
The, the thing is with what we have out there, I can tell you right now, in the sixty acres, we have nine practice fields, just with backstops. We get calls every day for more people wanting to practice. We have a flag football team that goes out there, we have soccer teams, uh, we've tried to mow out in the center to where we get more people to practice. But when we start here, uh, sometime this month, with different, uh, with, with, uh, right now, we got the soccer coming up. Everybody's calling for different fields, for practice fields, we just don't have enough facilities for them. I mean, I, if we built this, I think, I think it'd be used.
Well, then that value will be used.
It's a good investment in the community.
I'm, I'm not arguing the point that it won't be used, but then, um, that money can also be used to, to fund engineering and, and all the other stuff we need to go build a facility that this community ult- ultimately needs, but, and that's up to the court.
And, and again, I mean, I think it's something that we can build now, and if the voters don't vote on this other stuff and, and don't pass it, we'd already, we'd still have something for them. I think it's a good idea, but it's up to the court.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any more discussion on that? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Three, no, and two ayes. Now you want to make a motion for the equipment, or?
Yeah, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to buy equipment and capital outlay.
Second.
Second that one. There's a motion, a second and discussion on that? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, button, thank you.
Frank, uh, I'm sorry. The hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for Homicide Acres, did we, does that in here anywhere?
No.
Because that needs to be put in here. I would think, right?
If the intent is to pay it back, it has to be put somewhere.
Well, I mean, we, we voted on it.
Yeah, this court order.
Put it in here.
To get out of contingency. The judge already sent the letter in, the text on, and we're just waiting.
So that would remove a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars from our beginning cash balance?
Uh, no, that needs to be a line item into this sixteen-seventeen budget.
Okay, we take it out of.
Are you going to do there, are you going to take it out of the tax note? Well, if you're taking a hundred and seventy-five thousand out of here already, you can just put the one eighteen back.
Eighty-eight.
One eighty-eight.
I mean, I'm sorry, one eighty-eight.
Yeah, I don't know if the tax note money can be used for the repayment.
Okay, but, but we took out, like we said, one seventy-five, so I mean, in the reality, you have, uh, some money there, you have eleven thousand, you're buying eleven thousand for.
I'm adding a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Are we paying out of this year's budget or this year's?
We won't, they won't have that number to, to the budget.
So is that a question? The request for capital outlay that we put in, is that going to be covered with the three forty that we're going to get? Or is the three forty going to be over and above the capital outlay that we, we requested?
I, I thought what y'all just said is you're allocating three hundred and forty thousand and taking it away from what was requested by the precincts here.
Yeah. Okay, so I requested a running order, hundred and sixty thousand, so that would be removed, that would come from the three forty?
Yeah, you're.
Right, yeah. Okay, now, another question, we, I'm going to, I've got an item on the agenda for Monday. We are running short on the pipeline for several reasons, some of that money was used in precinct four. We had to buy materials we didn't anticipate, such as a lot more signage that was required by the, uh, by the state. Some couplings that we didn't expect, expect we're going to need, and so on. Can I use some of that money for, for that project?
Commissioner Ramon, didn't we, uh, the court agree to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for your project?
That was, uh, yeah, some of that money came.
You already spent all that money?
I'm sorry?
You already spent all that money?
No, it has not all been spent, but because of additional expenses, it is going to be spent.
I used a lot of my money, uh, from precinct four for that project, you know, and, and stuff that, that wouldn't, you know, money to, to pay for.
That's good, Chris, but, uh, we, uh, I'm requesting that I'm going to, uh, be asking for this. And my question was, can some of that three forty be used for that project?
Um, yes, it can.
Okay.
There's, um, that money's going to be needed, I, I was visiting with Carl about that. I, I asked him to contact you about putting something on the, at, the earliest convenience, because
Right.
we've got a payment that needs to be made for that contractor.
Okay, yes, and I, I attempted to get it on here, but the judge said he'd prefer that it wait till Monday.
And, um, so if that is approved on Monday, um, that money obviously is going to have to come from contingency to fund that.
We've already spent the hundred and fifty thousand we allocated?
No, but we have, um, an eighty, eighty thousand dollar bill, and I think we have sixty thousand dollars remaining. And then we have some, about an, I think we're going to need like another thirty thousand dollars.
What's the eighty thousand?
Um, that, um, contractor.
Contractor.
I know we took some of the money to pay the employees.
Yes, temporarily.
That was twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand, something like that. But that, they worked on two projects. They worked on Gus's project.
No, but we, he came back not too long ago, Chairman Commissioner Owens, to add some additional time to those employees, or we did something and, and they, they utilized part of that hundred and fifty thousand.
And it was about a thousand dollars that, that was, uh, over on, on that time work.
Any more discussion? Okay, oh, well, Mr. Owen, do we need to break? Do we need to break?
Take a break.
Okay, take a ten minute break?
Ten, boy, you.
You keep getting, no, I mean.
Thousand dollars for parks, and if you take the items that are in excess of fifty thousand dollars from the capital outlay that was included in the judge's budget, that's three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And so that puts us at two point four seven of.
That's really, like, really close to that.
So you got thirty thousand dollars remaining.
Okay. All right, and, uh, Jamie just gave you the, the fifty?
It is fifty percent, she showed me in the minutes. So, um, what, what B needs to know is, so the treasurer puts the money into the correct account, is when B collects that money for that fifty-eight million dollar pipeline, she needs to indicate to the treasurer so he can properly allocate the money to the proper account. That's the, if, otherwise, all the money's just going to go as current collection in the general fund.
Judge? If we're not going to, uh, do anything about fields, I'd like to at least authorize, uh, Commissioner Owens to, uh, level land out there at the fairgrounds and plant some, uh, seed for grass, that way we have, we can at least make use for practice fields that are, are always in need, I know we had some adults come and request a field that, a call for their practices, and, um, I think that, uh, we need to allocate more practice fields for our use. Want to put that upon the. Yes, sir, it is.
So, you're, you're giving authority to go do something, do the fields?
To do practice fields, and we're not doing the fields, but just, all you got to do, and, and we don't have to mark them or anything like that, just where they can have a place to go and practice.
That, that hundred and twenty, did I use ten thousand dollars of it to buy seed and stuff, uh, uh, it'd be a capital improvement.
You've got, if you raise that number to one fifty, then that's the two point five million. You've got, if you raise that number to one fifty, then that's the two point five million.
We don't want that much money for seed. I, I don't need, I mean, if we're just gonna level off.
If you used the, the hundred and twenty you got to buy seed, I mean, whatever, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, but I, I can use it, be okay? What?
I mean, I, I think we, we need.
I'm sorry.
We need a second, Judge, before we just. We need a second for that, for discussion.
Go ahead. Add ten thousand for, for seed.
At this point, I'll take anything I can get.
Okay, we need a, a.
Come batting zero.
We need a, a second for.
I thought you had a second.
No, I didn't.
Oh.
You add ten thousand to the one thirty?
Second, okay, now you, go ahead.
Uh, to give them the one twenty plus ten more per seed.
So, one thirty.
Would that be all right with that?
Uh, it, that should be enough seed, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can buy sand and everything with that. Yeah, that'd just tickle me to death.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any more discussion left?
My batting average is gone to hell anyway.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero.
They have to go buy them bins or something.
Okay, anybody else wanna discuss on the, I know there's elected offices that wanna discuss. Anybody in the commissioners wanna discuss more on the budget? I, I know Mr. Cerny wanted to approach the court, go ahead, Mr. Cerny.
Two minutes, Judge.
I got ten thousand dollars more, I wanna cry.
He's talking, we'll take it away.
Oh, don't do that, then I'd really cry.
Go ahead, Mr. Cerny.
Uh, I've, I've, I've approached the court, uh, before on this, uh, on this item, and this is, and it's to replace an employee that I actually cut back, uh, when my, uh, when, during the period of time that, uh, construction was, was slow and a lot of the things related to our office, uh, were slow. Uh, since then, uh, there's been a, not only an upswing in, in, in the, the area of, uh, construction where we're called upon to issue reports and inspections and et cetera. But, uh, also our, our duties have, have increased as mandated by state and federal laws, flood control, uh, and other areas, and also compliance, um, as mandated by Texas Water Development Board in, in subdivision regulations and other issues. It require a tremendous amount of outside work. Uh, this is the job description of the, uh, that I had included in my so-called wish list of my budget. And, and this, it would be a risk management field tech one. As you can see, the general, uh, responsibility would be enforcing the Texas Health and Safety Code. Investigate complaints of violations of the Health and Safety Code and report back to the Director of Environmental Services. Issue notices of violation, uh, according to the Health and Safety Code, that's the abatement of public nuisance. Uh, interpret construction terminology in reference to the issuance of building permits issued by the department and verify with on-site visits. And of course, perform any other related duties assigned by, uh, our office. Our requirements are, are fairly basic. Uh, uh, possess a Texas Valley Texas driver's license, possess a high school diploma or GED certificate, be able to walk in rough terrain and lift a minimum of fifty pounds. This particular job description does not and will not include any, uh, responsibility as far as the on-site sewage facility program is concerned. There's three of us in the office that are cross-trained in that and obtain, have the licenses to handle that. Uh, that person, uh, the, uh, salary, uh, annual salary of that person requested would be that field tech, uh, one pay grade after visiting with, uh, our human resource director would be seventeen thousand, uh, I'm sorry, uh, twenty-four thousand five seventy. That would be, that was considered the old pay, pay grade seventeen. I would like to be able to, uh, take the opportunity to show you graphically uh, why this position is, is needed. Um, in, almost entirely in the county, probably the only exception being to Mr. Ramon's precinct because there are large tracts, uh, but wherever we have residential tracts in the county, which is precinct two, precinct four, uh, pre- precinct three in Lakeview Comstock area, uh, the abatement of public nuisance law is what, anything, uh, that falls within three hundred feet of a property line or a public street can be enforced through that. And these are the type of situations, these are just a few pictures of that, that we went out and took in just a short, uh, area. Uh, of course, tires, everybody knows tires are, are a big problem. This is, this is, this, there's over eight hundred, in, in precinct two in, in, in Belgrade Park Estates, there's over eight hundred properties. And, and these are the type of things that, that, that we encounter out there and that we are trying to address along with all our other duties. Uh, if you, and this is within a, a two-block area on Lorraine Street. Uh, we find this, situations like this. Tires, which is fairly common throughout. And, and then, this is, this is what really, uh, I think is, is, is why this is so important. Here is a real, a real nice, well-kept residence. And, and this, this, this gentleman, I don't know if people, whoever they are, I obviously keep their lawn, their, their yard, they have their house in, in good condition and et cetera. And right next to them is a virtual jungle with cactus that is, uh, uh, six, seven foot high. Uh, uh, there's a dilapidated trailer back there, and you can see the edge of these people's house right next to it. Uh, and, and this is predominant, uh, for example, I have some pictures in, in precinct four, uh, that.
Hell, I was wondering when you were gonna get to it, all you, all you're doing is attacking my precinct.
No, sir, no, sir, I'm not attacking your precinct.
Sure, this feel like it, feels like the same way you, like what you did when you came to the court about me not taking care of the concession stand.
This is, this is not your fault, Commissioner.
Roger, over and over again.
No, sir, this is, this, this is not your fault. This is in precinct four. This is, this is Commissioner Flotus's precinct. Uh, and once again, we're finding, we're finding the, the, the same thing in, in his precinct that we find in any precinct.
Roger, what are you doing about these now?
What we're do, we're doing what we can. Uh, we're working these, uh, we're, uh, we're attacking these, these issues on a one-on-one. The thing about it, and I knew that question was gonna be asked, but this is not a, a situation where you draw just one time and, and remedy the situation. For example, in the, in the, in the, in the properties where you have, uh, lots that are growing up, the first thing you have to do is try and identify the lot. Then you have a process of, of either attempting to serve it and, and locally or by, by registered mail. So we're working these, I think Gus knows that and Louis knows that. We're working what we can, but we need one person, as we had in the past, out there dedicated to do this.
Uh, are these that, uh, these pictures that you've taken, what have you done about, done about these, all these properties?
We're in the process of working these right now. We took these pictures, we went out to identify some cold areas, and as we speak.
So, so you are working them?
Definitely. And, uh, uh, and this is no attack on your precinct, Commissioner. You have no, you're, this is not your fault.
What are you asking for?
I'm asking for an additional person.
At what price?
Twenty-four five.
And what about a vehicle?
Uh, we'll do with the vehicles we have, uh, because, uh, uh, we have, we have the two vehicles. Uh, at this time, I can, we can do with the vehicles we have, I believe. And I'm not asking for any increase in training, because this person will not be going to, uh, teach for OSSF training.
Thank you. I know, I saw B here, B, we had some questions for you, in fact, uh, on the pipeline.
On the pipeline, the information I gathered is, uh, uh, fifty-eight million are within those, uh, certified values. And, um, that it's only one active, uh, pipeline. And I asked about the search formula, and they ta, tell me that, uh, there's, uh, nothing going on with the search formula yet.
What is that?
And that.
What is that? You lost me.
They asked, they wanted to.
No, the search formula, what is, what is that, what are you talking about?
You, you're, you're asking about the, about the pipeline, right?
Yes, ma'am.
About the value.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand you, oh, there's, there's gonna be a search. They wanted, you all wanted to, to know about the search formula? To see how the money can be distributed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, what's it called? Search?
Search.
Searns?
Uh-huh.
Searns.
S E R?
S, you know, C E R T.
Searns, okay. Yeah, I didn't know what you were saying, I didn't understand what it was.
And, um, what they tell me is that, I believe, uh, that us from, uh, T White Pickett had already talked to you about it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that he said that there was nothing going on with that yet.
No, but there is a value put on it already.
The value?
Uh-huh, there's, there's already a value, and they're supposed to be paying taxes on this.
The value is within the certified values, you already know.
Okay, that's the search.
So that.
I didn't either, I couldn't figure out what she was talking about.
But according to the order, we had fifty percent of that value is supposed to go into a different fund.
Okay, see, uh, that, that's one thing, they cannot tell me anything about how we're gonna take that formula.
Well, I mean, it's one of those deals that I think, I think, now that you've already looked into it, you already have a value. Uh, Mr. Ramon has already looked up the court order, and it is fifty percent of that vat of whatever we collect on that pipeline needs to be set aside to go into.
Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge, uh, then, I mean.
Just remember, when you collect that money, you're gonna have to have a mechanism to.
Yeah, a mechanism, uh, to see how, how much that money's gonna be.
There's only one, uh, and visiting with that individual, you just said the guy that took the value, he said it was just one customer.
The one, the one, um, pipeline?
Yes, and it, and it's one, one account, right? So it's, it's not gonna be like they're gonna be, everybody's gonna be coming in in bits and pieces, that's just one person paying the bill, one entity. So it ain't gonna, you're not, you're not gonna have multiple accounts, it should just be one account according to that.
And if I do, I'll let you know. See, right now I can't really see.
Oh, no, don't let me know, Judge.
So, somebody know?
B, so theoretically, that, the owner of that pipeline is gonna come up and cut you a check for two hundred and some odd thousand dollars for property tax?
If it's only in one account? If it's like, they're saying that it's only in one account?
Well, it's one owner.
One owner.
There's multiple of, there's multiple blocks in there, but there's one owner.
And if they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay at one time. Not like that, the sort of heels that we had different.
So this is not considered like your utility lines and stuff like that? Rolling stock or whatever you call it?
No, that's like the only stock. Uh, may, maybe, I don't know, let me see the account number.
And that's like I'm, I was asking, there was a fifty-eight million dollar value put on it, I don't know if there was discounts, if, if, if there was other stuff that, that went into it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, I, I don't know. Uh, and when I asked for the value, uh, Mr. Shidi couldn't give it to me. She, the other man called me, the one that puts the value on it, and he says it's one account, looks like it's one account, one company, and it's a fifty-eight million dollar value. And I said, but do they get like discounts or, or something? And I think that's what you're talking about. Uh, I don't know, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, who's money? I mean, that needs to be figured out, now. I mean, and she needs to figure out if there's, you know, you said rolling stock or, or whatever, that needs to be figured out before we start putting something in our budget. I mean, and we can't do it, I mean, she needs to figure it out.
Yeah, well, they should, they should give you some kind of formula when.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean, you have a, you have a court order of the fifty percent, and then Shidi needs to give you a formula as to how much y'all are collecting, I mean, but it's nothing we can do, it's, I mean, B, normal, she needs to do it.
And I just, it depends on when they pay it, if, if they paid in, uh, in October and they get a discount, or if they paid in January.
No, and that's fine, cause whatever it is, it is, I mean, whatever the dollar amount is, you know, there's still fifty percent of it needs to be broken down.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a little less than a hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm just trying to figure out a, um.
Dollar.
A dollar amount, so we can put it in the budget.
At a hundred percent, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you, you have to take the ninety-two percent off of it.
Well, it's, it's based on entire tax rate, right?
Yeah, I'm basing it off of the, the entire tax rate. At a hundred percent collection, it's a hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred, which is half. That's half of the total. And you have to figure it at ninety-two percent or whatever we figure.
It's higher than that.
It should be, um, it should be close, like two hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Well, you're talking about.
Fifty-one cents on fifty-eight million.
Yeah, well, I, I'm giving you half, not the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm giving you the half, or not the whole thing.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so it's about a hundred and, it's less than a hundred and fifty, than one thirty, one something like that. That's at a hundred percent, it'd be one fifty, half of that.
Yeah.
I didn't figure it off of ninety-two percent.
Yeah, one, one thirty-eight.
Yeah.
And whatever I find out, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff, do you want to focus?
Yes. Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Judge, Commissioner. I just, for, for clarification on, on the budget that, on the proposed budget that was filed on page seventy-four of ninety-eight, uh, the calculations does not come across as the deputy's, uh, salary of thirty-four. Just wanna make sure that that gets corrected.
I think, I think that was accurate for, for, that was an error on our part, and I think it amounts to an additional seven thousand dollars, but I wanted the sheriff to present it because I want to make sure that understanding of the court is gonna raise that. The intent to raise the thirty-four.
Right, yeah, that was a, that was.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was included in that. Also, on the, on the capital, what do we submitted? Uh, we asked for three vehicles, just for clarification, see if they're, and. They're still in there?
They're still in there.
You still in there? Okay, and just to go on the, on the record, I guess, uh, I requested, uh, six additional deputy positions. Yeah, they're not in there. Okay, I just wanted to go on the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, one, one last one, the, uh, communication lead, uh, position.
No, that wasn't.
We don't have any new positions in the state yet.
The only thing we did was raise the communication to twenty-four.
Okay, there's no new positions at all in here?
Yeah, the Sosa.
Mr. Sosa.
Yeah, we gave one to Sosa.
Okay.
Now, he'd actually gone, I from thirty-four hundred or thirty-nine hundred to eighty-nine hundred.
Oh, yeah, the dog get you.
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners, the last, uh, budget hearing, uh, just wanted to go on record, as the sheriff said, the travel and training, I'm still requesting eleven hundred. Uh, I haven't seen the new budget to see if that's, if that was included. No?
It's not in.
Okay, and at the last budget workshop, uh, you all had asked me to come back with figures on what an accountant would cost or an accountant would be in my office. I went on my list serve, uh, they've all, the like comparable counties have come back anywhere from forty-five to sixty-five thousand, uh, annually for an accountant. I've asked locally and, uh.
How much money are you asking for?
Anywhere from forty to fifty-five.
How much money are you asking for?
Forty-five.
Well, let me find your budget here. In your personnel.
What, what is your budget?
I have one thirty-one. At least it was in the last one.
I think the number's changed.
The pages may have changed or not.
Yeah, the numbers have changed. On the, on the one we were just handed, the numbers have changed on the box.
I haven't received that one yet.
And we just received it. Okay, well, I, I think it's, uh, one thirty-six, my number's cut off, but it's right after the county article. I think it's one thirty-six.
The accountant, this alley would be based depending on.
That's it.
Salaries and education.
The salaries, correct. So you have a, an assistant county treasurer at forty.
Mm-hmm.
You have a part-time at eleven, and then yours. Would you need those other people, part-times and all that, too?
I think I'd, I'd still need the part-timer.
And the assistant county treasurer?
Yes.
I mean, assistant county treasurer?
Yes.
If you had a, a, an accountant in that office.
I have an accountant in that office. My assistant county treasurer has a degree in accounting.
So you would need.
I would need at least one more full-timer.
I think if you add the full-timer accountant in there, I don't think you'd need the part-time employee. That's my personal opinion. I don't run the department, you do, sir.
Those are just my requests.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, we need to, I mean, we keep on, like, people keep coming up. Are we gonna give him another employee? I mean, we've all talked about, uh, giving him, getting him some help on the accounting part. So, I mean, I, let's take care of that before we just take off.
I think he needs an accountant, but I don't think you need the part-time to go with it. I think you can cut the part-time and hire an accountant. That's my personal opinion.
Where are you gonna set salary at? Now, let's, let's do something.
He was asking for forty, I don't know, Frank, what, what is a, a, an accountant? I don't know what they make. I don't know.
I don't, I, I don't know.
Matt likes the eighty thousand dollar.
Yeah. What, what is a general accountant, I mean, make?
General accountant, and, uh, degree certified, you know, still, or just someone with just, uh, education somewhat?
Some education somewhat to be able to help us with the accounting.
Starting out, he would be in.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
I don't have a problem supporting a, a full-time accountant there, but I, I'm, I'm with you. I don't think we need a part-time if you're gonna hire a full-time.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's my opinion.
Make the motion, let's go.
I'll make a motion to add a full-time accountant at forty-five plus benefits and to take out the part-time.
Just a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nobody? Four, zero. Thank you. All right?
One, uh, one other deal before we leave. We talked about that airlife.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Bring the, the airlife on there. I think we need to add a line to this budget for X, whatever the money's gonna be. We've had numbers anywhere from, if you look at what the school's proposing, uh, if we go by percentage to do the hundred and thirty-five, I think that was like thirty-some odd thousand dollars.
What they're proposing here says fifty-nine thousand, four hundred, which I guess they're splitting it in this letter between us and them.
The, the, yeah, and I got the letter, Commissioner. The, the problem is, is that I think there's other people wanna participate.
Okay.
Uh, I, I just, I think we need to set some money aside to do it.
Let's set aside, if we set aside forty, that would.
Well, if we go by the percentages on there and, and, and do that, and if everybody participates, ours would be thirty-three thousand and change, and there's another seven thousand and change that, that our employees would have the coverage that wherever this airlife is at, if, wherever they service, if our employees are hurt outside of the county, they would be covered for about another seven, eight hundred dollars, so probably about forty-two.
Okay. The only one I understand that doesn't wanna participate is the city.
And they're visiting with them, um, we'll see. But I think if we set aside, you know, like forty-two, that would cover it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, aye.
Do you want to address the, something, at the scene?
I thought we already addressed it.
What, to get it adopted?
No, we're gonna address it at the annual, uh, monthly.
What about, Frank?
Yeah.
All, all these special funds, we got a book from Tac the other day that tells who's actually in control of these things. And most of them are actually the commissioner's court. It's not the individuals. And they're required to be approved and put into this budget, and we control the expenditures according to the, not on all of them, but on a bunch of these funds. I don't know if you've seen this book.
Haven't I. The, uh, we requested the supplemental budgets for those special funds, and we've received, um, I don't know if we see, we see all of them, but I know we see, you know, a great majority of them.
Okay, well, according to this, the only ones that can expend funds on a lot of these is the commissioner's court. It's, I think we were under the impression they were under control of other places, but a lot of these are under control of commissioner's court. The budgets have to be part of commissioner's court, and expenditures have to be approved by commissioner's court. I don't know if you wanna read this, but, um, so we're gonna need those, all of, all of them budgets.
Okay. Any others? If not, this means adjourned.